Plymouth Select Board, I will call to order this the Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, meeting of Plymouth's Select Board. This is a meeting that is occurring in a hybrid format. We have members of the board that will be joining us in person. We may have members of the board that are joining us remotely via Zoom. Members of the public may also attend this meeting in person or via Zoom. They can come to the Great Hall here at Town Hall, or they can join us on Zoom on the webinar link that is on the agenda that is posted on the town website. Members of the public may also view this meeting by tuning into Comcast Channel 9, or Verizon Channel 47, or watching online at pactv.org. At this time, please join the board in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I will read into the record the executive session language. The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 9, "to meet or confer with a mediator as defined in Section 23C of Chapter 233, with respect to any litigation or decision on any public business within its jurisdiction involving another party, group, or entity, provided that any decision to participate in mediation shall be made in an open session, and the party's issues involved and purpose of the mediation shall be disclosed, and no action shall be taken by any public body with respect to those issues which are the subject of the mediation without deliberation and approval for such action at an open session." And this will be in relation to Northern Construction. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session for this purpose?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Mr. Blitzer has moved.
Second.
Mr. Mahoney has seconded. Any discussion about whether or not the board should enter into executive session? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will enter into executive session starting at 5:07, and we will be returning afterwards. Thank you.
First item of business is a public hearing for a liquor license hearing for Vitamin C Brewing Company, doing business as Vitamin C Brewing, 98 Water Street, Unit 102, Richard DeBona, manager. In accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held at Plymouth Town Hall, 26th Court Street, on Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, to consider the application for an annual farmer brewery pouring permit from Vitamin C Brewing Company, LLC, doing business as Vitamin C Brewing, 98 Water Street, Unit 102, Richard DeBona, manager. Description of premises is as follows. First floor of an 80-foot-by-20-foot multi-story mixed-use building made of wood and concrete with a shingled roof. The space consists of 4,000 square feet of eternal space broken out in seven rooms. In addition, the space includes approximately 2,000 square feet of an outside patio that runs along the front of the building. The patio space is cordoned off by stone pillars and chains to keep it enclosed. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should plan to attend the meeting or by Zoom. I'm going to officially open the hearing. Mr. DeBona here, would you like to say anything before we get started, or you want me just to open it up? Make sure the green light's on, and then you identify yourself for the records if you're going to speak.
Hi, I'm Richard DeBona, manager of Vitamin C Brewing Plymouth. Yeah, so I think we have everything in order. We're opening a brewery with, we're going to have sort of food and beer and have some entertainment there also. That's the plan at least. So we're coming here to seek your approval.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone online, Jeanne? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none? None online, Jeanne?
Somebody asked.
Okay. Please come up to the microphone, make sure the green light's on, and identify yourself for the record.
Hi, Anne Marie Schultz, Anna Butter. I have questions like hours of operation and parking and noise and music inside, music Live around the corner, so the patio is going to be really close to my front yard. So those are questions that I would like to hear more about.
Dino Fenari, also manager of Vitamin C Brewing as well. In regards to hours, we're planning on opening at 11:00 AM, and our hours will close at 10:00 PM. In regards to noise or music, the plan is to have piped-in music indoors, as well as the occasional acoustic music through entertainment license. The other questions, I'm sorry?
How are you dying?
So again, we'll be closing at 10:00 PM. Parking is all off-site.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition or have questions? Okay, and I'll close that portion and bring it back to the board. Charlie?
The answer to the parking is it's all, it's already been, the parking was already been approved when they applied for their project. The commercial space was already part of it, and they bought extra parking spaces in the lot next door to add to their parking. So that's already been approved. I have questions if who's ever going to manage. I'd just like to know, just give us a little of your background on your experience in the restaurant bar business?
Sure. So again, Dino Fenari, the founder of Vitamin C Brewing, it started in my basement years and years and years ago. We've, actually, this will be our second location, our second brick-and-mortar location. We have a current location in Weymouth, Mass., which is, has been open since February of 2019. We've run a very successful, neighbor-friendly, family-friendly business there. In fact, the type of business that we have oddly enough is a taproom. It is, it's primarily families that visit us. We've kept our hours in check for that reason. We don't want to have to deal with the late-night crowds and anything that comes along with that. So we've just recently been commended by Senator Patrick O'Connor in our district down there for the charity and community work that we've done. So we're very, very excited to be here in Plymouth, and I can say that, given the opportunity, we'll continue to give back, and we're excited for that opportunity to do so.
Are you going to be brewing on site, or is that kind of going to come from the other location?
So there's a very, very small pilot system which fulfills the need that we have as a farmer brewer license in order to have that. But primarily, brewing will be done in Weymouth, and the product will be brought down to Plymouth.
So as you know, we're getting to be the brewing capital of Massachusetts.
Yes, sir.
Down here, we've got quite a few successful breweries down here, and just to make the neighbors feel comfortable, you've got live entertainment, but is that inside, outside? Where would you, what do you envision, and what time do you envision doing outside entertainment?
Well, I can only go off of what we've done so far to give you an example. Typically, our entertainment is in the afternoons when we do have it. It's not an everyday thing. We may have it once a week, and usually what we do is from like the hours of 5:00 to 7:00, or 5:00 to 8:00 is when we want it. We don't want late night. I understand. I live in a very congested neighborhood myself in Hull where everybody's on top of each other, so I can tell you, I understand. Our primary business is we're not a music venue. We're a brewery, but having extra programming like music and things of that nature is just another thing that attracts people, and the tough climate that we have as it is right now to bring consumers in, we need to do whatever we have to do to try to capture people to come in and...
So it's just light music complementing your menu?
Correct, yeah.
Just something to get people's attention and...
Yes, sir.
Because as you know, where you are...
Oh, yeah.
It is, it is a lot of residential...
And we're sensitive to that. We are, and we're very approachable, and again, we want to be good neighbors. We've done that where we are in Weymouth, and we've been very, very sensitive to concerns and want to make sure that people are happy.
My last question. At least in the season, in the tourist season, are you going to be open seven days a week?
Our plan is to be open seven days a week all year long.
Good nights, okay, good.
Yeah, we've, you know, even in our business here in where we are in Weymouth, you know, January, February quiets down, but we scale accordingly to that with staffing and with production. So the plan is to be open seven days a week. We want a place for people to come.
That's good. And you have a tenant next door to you who's a different, it's a different...
LaBaya, the Mediterranean restaurant, yep.
They do a great, great job, and they're doing a great business, so...
Yeah, we're excited to be neighbors with them as well.
Yeah, because you're different concepts, and that's what I like. It's a different concept, even though it's the same, but right down there, it's, you're not competing really with him. It's a different clientele, so...
Exactly. I mean, Weymouth, Weymouth, I'm sorry. Plymouth truly will be, will have more breweries than any other town in the state, and it's a draw. Breweries have their following. I mean, we're a worldwide brand, we're available in 20-plus states, we're available all over Europe, we're available all over Asia, soon to be Australia, so we have a following, and we're excited to be a part of this community down here. The nice thing is, in our industry, it's very collaborative. We don't compete with each other. We all work together. We're already looking at ways to attract more folks to come down.
The last thing I'm going to ask you is, please get involved in the neighborhood, in the business associations, because we're really trying to, there are a lot of people here tonight you're going to hear about trying to revitalize the downtown in the waterfront, and so please get involved, because you'll be very helpful.
I think you're going to be sick, probably sick of seeing me, to be honest with you, because that's what we do. Thank you, sir.
Just for clarity's sake, about the outdoor entertainment or any other associated licenses that are required associated to your liquor license, you, as far as I know, you have not applied for those licenses yet.
We have.
Oh, they're coming up? Oh, okay, never mind. All right, so they will be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Seeing none, wait the approval of the board?
I'll make the motion. We approve this.
Second. First by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Now we're going to move on to the license that Harry was just questioning. Commin' Victula Comprehensive Entertainment Group 1 through 3, radio, TV, live entertainment, Sunday entertainment, live entertainment, early Sunday, 10:00 AM, outdoor amplified music permit daily from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM for the stream music through speakers and live entertainment.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion. Mr. Helm?
Question for the board in regards to the concern mentioned by Butters. Is the, is there any way that we can specify, as they have agreed, that the live entertainment that would be outside would be acoustic in nature rather than electronically amplified? They're shaking their head. Can we do that? Or can we...
I would defer to the board just to let us know how we would do as such, but we're amenable to that, absolutely.
Yeah, you can do it, because sometimes the acoustic is amplified, so I don't know if you'd get technical.
For the town manager, what would be, if I were to move to amend the, what we're discussing?
Yeah, you could be very, you could be more specific.
So obviously, yeah, acoustic is amplified.
Correct.
Okay, electronically. I mean, we all know that, but how would we word this?
For the live entertainment?
Right.
You would specifically state acoustic only?
Okay.
If that's what you're seeking.
Well, that's a first for me, but I just don't know if we can do it like that. And the chance that we can't, then we either approve it or not approve it, but if we approve it and there's an issue, which I was going to say when it was my turn, then we'll be right back here, and we'll be questioning you, and you'll have to give us some good valid reasons as to why the neighbors are upset. So that's usually how it works, but... Page John?
If I may add, I just want to make sure that whatever it is that we decide, that the board decides, that there's just a clear understanding on both sides of what it is.
Well, right now, so it's clear on both sides, it's what you applied for, and like I said, if there's an issue, we'll be very clear, and you'll be very back here clear. All right?
Fair enough, fair enough.
So in other words, to the chairman, the, my request to amend the motion, we are not going to do that. We're just going to just say if they...
I don't know if we can legally, so I...
I believe the town manager said we could.
You can put parameters around any one of these licenses. You can dictate the hours, the operating hours, when you expect them to open, when you expect them to close?
I think it's till 8:00 PM, 1 to 8:00.
No, right, but what I'm saying is that you can be more specific on the hours, on the types of entertainment that you will approve. So if the board desires, the majority board desires, have acoustic only, you could amend the request. You have the legal right to amend that request.
Any other comments from the board? Would you like to make the...
My motion stands, so...
Okay, I moved... There is a difference, sorry, I'm not going to interrupt, but there's a difference between acoustic and acoustic amplified. There's two separate distinctions there as well.
So it could be acoustic amplified?
That's right.
I'm going to move that we amend the first group of licenses, the licenses in conjunction with the new liquor license, to be, the amplified music permit to be for amplified acoustic That's a motion to amend.
So we have Charlie's motion to approve the application, and we had a second by Mr. Kevin?
I seconded Charlie's.
Great, okay. And you want to amend Charlie's motion?
Yeah, I just, you know, motion to amend, which would, I believe, would need a second to be voted on, I'm imagining.
Do I have a second? Seeing none, goes back to Charlie's. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
No.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four to one.
It stands.
Next, we have a public hearing for Daniel Stoll, doing business as Catering by Dan Stoll, 775 State Road. In accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held at Plymouth Town Hall, 26th Court Street, on Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, at 6:05 PM to consider the application for an annual all-alcohol restaurant license from Daniel Stoll, doing business as Catering by Dan Stoll, 775 State Road, Daniel Stoll, manager. Description of the premises is as follows. Open single-level dining room with breakfast, bar seating, two bathrooms, and small kitchen, full basement for storage. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should plan to attend this meeting. I now bring it, open the meeting and bring it to Mr. Stoll, you're the applicant, correct?
Yes. My name's Dan Stoll. I own Stoll's Cafe down in Manomet, and I am looking to renew my liquor license, which I had back in 2019, just beer and wine, but looking for a full liquor license this time over at my new location.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Please identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on.
Steve Leiden, I've been going to Stoll's restaurant since a few years when he was down at the other location, and now there's a new location. It's more of a family restaurant, and I would support this license. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone online? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? No one online? Okay, I now declare the hearing closed and bring it back to the board for their wishes.
Move approval?
I just have a couple of questions. Dan, I just got a couple of questions.
Yeah, of course.
You got rid of it in 2019, is that because of COVID?
Beginning of COVID, yes. Yeah, I didn't want to spend the money on, I didn't want a license that really wasn't quite profitable at the old location that I was at.
So the new location, is there a bar in there, or are you planning on putting a bar in, or just the seating and...
I'd like to do a bar. Six seats is all that I can really accommodate.
But you're looking, this is not, this is basically to complement your food.
Yeah, more than anything. I have a lot of requests for...
What hours are you going to run in this? Because I know you're open for breakfast.
Yeah, yeah. We do breakfast, lunch, dinner. Close on Mondays. Sundays, we close at 1:00. It's breakfast only. So Tuesday through Saturday, we're open until 8:00. I'd like to see Fridays and Saturdays open until 9:00 with the approval of the license.
Right, right. That's a long day, so, with the breakfast, when you add breakfast in, but, yeah. Okay, no, I have no problem, but thanks.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Mahoney, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Abstain.
Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. Four and one abstention. Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Before we go on to the vote for the seasonal population, we have David Golden here, chairman of the Memorial Advisory Committee, and he has another meeting to attend, so we're going to let him go next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave Golden, chairman of the Memorial Advisory Committee. I'm here to present to you folks some additional changes to our memorial advisory policy. This stems from a conversation that I had with the town manager about additional groups that are coming before the town requesting memorials in various locations across our community. Previously, our policy really focused on individuals, and so in talking with Derek, we thought it was appropriate at this time to expand the scope of the committee. I won't read this line by line, but I'll give you some highlights. So at the top of this newly amended policy, I've added the ability to commemorate sites of historical or cultural significance in the community, as well as groups. I've clarified that we're an advisory body to you folks. You recently expanded our committee from three to five, so I had that reflected here in our policy. And then going down to the eligibility requirements for the various types of applications that we can have. The first is the commemoration of sites. Now, we've had a couple of applications come before us that we've recommended to you folks that have commemorated sites. One such example is Camp Denon. We recommended that for approval by your board. So we're really just sort of memorializing what we were already doing in practice. So in here, we're saying that sites have to have a significant historical or cultural impact on the town. I pulled this language from the World Heritage Foundation, so I thought it was pretty good, and I think it reflects what we're already doing. I've clarified that individual honorees should have a record of community service here in Plymouth, and then lastly, I've added that group honorees are permitted, and that such groups would need to be, have a considerable positive impact on Plymouth, either through notoriety or through service to the community. I provided this in full in your packets. I'm happy to take any questions that you folks might have, but really, I think what I wanted to impress upon you is that these changes are really just memorializing what we are already doing on the committee, so we're expanding our scope to meet what we're, the work that we're already completing. I did put this in front of the Memorial Advisory Committee tonight, and they voted unanimously in favor of it. We had one member absent, so there were four of us who voted in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Any questions or comments, Mr. Golden? Mr. Canty?
Just thank you, Mr. Golden, for presenting the updated policies to us. I know it's a relatively new committee. We've already seen some of your work product come before us. I know that the individuals that have so far been honored, and the future ones, in the near future as well, I'm sure appreciate the work that you're doing to vet these. I know that it can probably be a bit dicey at times analyzing whether someone's application to memorialize somebody is worthy of action or not, but we think it's a valuable tool for the community, and we thank you for doing it. So thank you, David. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, just one question. When will you be ready? Your meeting next week, or I know you've got a few things coming?
Yeah, so we just met tonight, and we reviewed the only two remaining outstanding applications that we have. So the committee meets based on the volume of applications that come in. If we have additional applications come through, we'll address them as quickly as possible. Our next meeting is not scheduled because we have got no applications to review at this point.
It's a very important committee, so anyway, thanks, David.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Are you looking for a vote on this tonight, David?
Yes, please.
Okay, wish of the board?
To make a motion that we approve the updated policies for the Memorial Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Helm. Discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate you taking me out of order here tonight. Thank you very much, David.
Okay, going back to where we were, a pledge of liquor license, Vitamin C Brewing, doing business as Vitamin C Brewing, 98 Water Street, is requesting a pledge of license and inventory to Coastal Heritage Bank.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Motion by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Vote for seasonal population, 88,835.4.
I'm curious about the .4 of a person there, but nevertheless, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney. Discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. There were originally two administrative notes. We're going to pull administrative note number two. So looking for approval, what's your recommendation for number one on the admin notes?
I would make a motion that we approve admin note number one, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
First by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Helm, discussion. Seeing none. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five, unanimous. Moving on to outdoor dining. There may be several or more speakers. Um, it's gonna be about three minutes apiece. And we're gonna start with, where is he? Mr. Veo. Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Brad, I'm sorry. Brad, go ahead, Brad.
Hey, you want me to present first?
Sure. I wasn't looking up there.
Nope, you're good. Jenny, do you have the slide up?
Yes, it is up, Brad.
Okay, perfect. So we'll go over, uh, quickly just the history of outdoor dining.
Yes.
So, uh, six eight of 2020, um, the governor allows outdoor dining with relaxed zoning and alcohol restrictions. And then in September of 20, the governor allows local option to extend outdoor dining beyond, um, November first, 2020. And it will term sixty days past the end of the state of emergency or an earlier date a city or town establishes or declares. On five twenty-eight, twenty-one, the governor declared the state of emergency over as of June fifteenth, 2021, which was the start of that sixty day clock. Now, that's just in general terms of where the state stood on outdoor dining. What Plymouth decided to do was Plymouth, Plymouth officials had restaurants file for an alteration of premises, which is reapproved via license agreement with the select board annually and sent to the A B C C. So we, um, in a roundabout way, uh, did not have to follow these specific guidelines that were put out by the state because we filed for an alteration of premises that again is reapproved each year via license agreement with the select board. Next slide, Jenny. Um, outdoor dining details. Um, fee for 2023 season was two thousand for existing parklet users and twenty-five hundred for new, and it both included flowers. Uh, the main factor of this was the offset of funds between what the cost was and the money paid was from the use of ARPA funds, which was expiring, uh, which was highlighted last year. Some restaurants use sidewalk areas for seating beyond the parklet, which was approved in the license agreement. And, um, looking back at the packets last year, if you guys had that, a few of the restaurants did put that forward that you approved. The cap on the number of added seats per restaurant is twenty-nine due to plumbing code. So no matter what, um, the board decides, that is a number that we cannot go above. And the outdoor dining guidelines were enforced by inspectional services. Next slide. Um, cost of outdoor dining, uh, per parklet with and without flowers for the 2024 season. So this is just to recap all of the costs that go into setting these up, the cost of materials, and really the flowers. Uh, if we were to maintain the exact, uh, process that we followed last year with the, uh, the flowers being the town's, um, the town's purchase. So for a renewal, if you follow along, the facilities and highway total cost is just over twenty-seven hundred dollars. When you add in the flowers, which were just over twenty-two hundred dollars last year, I put a small escalator on there estimating that they were twenty-three hundred. That brings the total to five thousand, uh, just over five thousand dollars, again for a renewal. If you look at a new parklet, the facilities cost almost goes up by two thousand dollars, and that's just due to the material, as well as the customization, um, for creating the initial parklet. Um, so the cost of that is right around five thousand dollars without flowers and right above seventy-two hundred dollars, uh, with flowers. And again, that's not to say that that is our recommendation, but that is what the true costs are, um, of all of the labor, time and material that goes into all of these. And then next slide, please. And then these are the board options that we'd like for, um, discussion, uh, for the 2024 season. So the first option would be is to stop outdoor dining by not entering into annual license agreements. The second option would be was, is to continue outdoor dining at prior seasons at a set rate for new and existing parklet loser, uh, users, including an option for sidewalk tables. So the parklet price would include sidewalk seats. Um, but again, the cap would still be twenty-nine, no matter what setup you had. And we also recommended a ca- a cap on the total number of sidewalk, uh, seats or tables. Um, and for example, we use three tables of four seats each. Again, just because you don't want to congest the sidewalk areas in certain, um, areas. And that would be, again, reviewed, all of these are reviewed by inspectional services. Option three would be to allow outdoor dining in parklets only and no sidewalk tables. Option four, and again, this isn't a one size fits all because you could do, you could continue outdoor dining and do option four, which is allow sidewalk tables for businesses individually that are not using a parklet at a set rate per seat. We felt this was equitable because there's a few businesses along, um, the, the street that cannot use a parklet. Um, and we would recommend a cost of a hundred dollars per seat. And again, that not dollar amount of a hundred dollars per seat falls in line with the roughly, um, existing parklet users per seat, if you broke it down, uh, per seat. So that's what we felt was equitable. Um, the big question is if we continue on, we need to determine, um, how the flowers are purchased. Um, and we recommend that the businesses order directly in accordance with the guidelines, and we could discuss a, a strict vendor that they would have to be purchased. But again, if we followed suit of what we did last year, the town essentially ends up being the middleman on this, where we don't need to be. Um, again, the businesses can work directly with the, uh, the, um, flower, uh, organization. And the use of sidewalks is reviewed again and approved by inspectional services. And there would be no change again to the max seating is twenty-nine, no matter what setup is approved. And that was it. So I'll kick it to the chairman.
Thank you, Brad. Any questions for Brad at this time or comments? Mr. Helm?
Brad, on option four, allowing sidewalk tables for businesses individually that are not using a parklet, the outdoor dining, um, guidelines are very specific about, um, ADA compliance. But they refer specifically to the, they're, they're, I, I, they were created in the parklet environment, where there would be a parklet and there would be some on a sidewalk. For instance, there's a required minimum of five feet, okay? That's in a straight line of transit, not zigzagging through tables. Um, no umbrellas can be lower than eight feet, the, where the edge of the umbrella is. Those are ADA compliance requirements. Um, do you see if we allow these sidewalk tables, um, do they fit in to the guidelines as developed by the outdoor dining committee? Um, or do, or is there another set of guidelines specifically for them that would be needed?
I would say they would fall under any townwide guidelines that we have or state guidelines. So inspectional services would still review that to make sure there's full compliance in any code or, um, anything we have. I can't imagine the downtown dining guidelines were more strict than what was allowed by code, but, um, I'll certainly, I think Nick Mayo's in attendance. He may be able to answer that specifically. But again, we would make sure that any code that's in place, um, for size would have to be maintained and enforced.
Any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, one.
I'll have some after, I want to hear from the public first.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Veo? Sorry about that, I'm not used to.
You've told me to sit down before, so it's not a first. Uh, Rick Veo and, um, Meg Ryko, local developer, along with the Plymouth General Store. Um, so I'll say right up front, I'm not here as someone who actually, at this point, has used a parklet, uh, although I may be this year. I haven't decided yet, but I have not used it. Um, so you, and I'm gonna try to stick to the three minutes, but bear with me. So you've heard me up here talk about a lot of big economic, uh, things in town. Revitalizing the downtown, renovating historic buildings, bringing housing back to downtown, affordable housing, um, expanding our oyster aquaculture community to put Plymouth on every menu in the country. A, a lot of big picture ideas, right? That I still very much am behind and promote and focus on. But to make all those big picture ideas happen, and certainly not just me, I'm saying the community as a whole, um, there's a lot of little cogs that go in to keep that whole machine running. And not the least of which is outdoor dining. Now, it just so happened, out of a pandemic, this became a thing. Um, but it was actually a great thing. It's probably one of the few good things that happened out of, uh, the pandemic that, that brought outdoor dining to Plymouth. The first year, it was a bit of a train wreck. We looked like a bit of a carnival, and i- it is what it is. We had to get it going, businesses need help. But, uh, thanks to Mr. Helm, uh, and all the people on the outdoor dining committee, we, um, I, I think pulled off, uh, outdoor dining better than anyone else that I know of in the state. Um, the look, the feel, um, it was phenomenal. I hear comments all the time of people saying, I can't believe what you guys did with outdoor dining. Uh, and they're not because they think I was part of it or whatever, just that they've seen pictures or they've come down and enjoyed it. Um, or they've seen the transformation from orange barricade to, you know, historic looking wood barricades with white flowers all lining the street. It looks great. So I can't stress enough that outdoor dining is one of those little cogs. It is an econo- a piece of the economic engine that's driving Plymouth right now. It's not just, you know, one of the restaurants needs help with a few more seats. That's great, and they do, but it's a much, much bigger picture. It's driving people to Plymouth. And I look at outdoor dining and the contribution the town may have to make this year or for the next three years, um, as a short-term, um, investment in a, in a much bigger picture. Over a short period of time, I think we can redevelop, um, the entire downtown strip to incorporate outdoor dining and sidewalk dining, et cetera, et cetera, like many other communities have, whether it's Worcester, whether it's up in, you know, Portland or Portsmouth. I think we can get there. But I think it's very important that the board and the community, um, doesn't look at this like, oh, we're, we're subsidizing the downtown restaurants. What we're doing is driving economic development in Plymouth, period. It's very important, I think, the delta between what the businesses contribute and what the, uh, the, the actual cost is, is peanuts. It's a rounding error in a three-hundred million dollar budget. And I get it, there's probably a lot of rounding errors that we could spend money on. But again, this is a major piece in it. It drives people down here, and it's not just driving people down here to say, oh, Plymouth is a great restaurant destination. It's when the couple comes down and one of the spouses that hadn't been down here says, wow, I'd like to move my office down here, or I wouldn't mind rea- you know, relocating down here. Plymouth is fantastic. This is one of those drivers, and it seems insignificant, but it's not. Um, I could not support this more. And it's not because I had something to do with setting it up. It has to do with, there's a lot of people in town, including the, you know, the town administration, the selectmen, various boards, businesses, who are all driving toward the same thing, and that's to put Plymouth number one in every possible category we can. We absolutely need this, and I would ask that the board take a hard look at this and fill in the delta between what the businesses are paying, even if it has to be a little bit more this year, to what the actual cost is. And as I look up at the options, one through four, please do not consider the idea of doing the flowers individually. There's a reason we did it that way in the beginning. It was because it needed to look uniform, and quite frankly, it came out looking kick ass. If we go another way, it's not going to look that way. We can get rid of the town watering them, um, you know, and pruning them, which we did the first year, let the businesses do that, but it needs to look uniform. I'm a little concerned about number four, um, because it, it eliminates the protection. Um, the parklet acted as protection to the, to the tables that are in the parklet, but it also acts as protection to the tables that are on the sidewalk. So I think that has to be thought through if you can't provide another form of protection for those tables, other than a six inch curb. I, I don't know if that's a great idea unless the tables can be along the building, which then it's not an issue. As for the rules, those guidelines, I wrote most of them. They were very stringent. They were designed to make sure that people, uh, were locked down to what they could do. Um, I don't believe the handicap is five feet. I think it's more like three or three and a half feet or forty-two inches. We put five feet in because we wanted a thorough fair going through there. We didn't want it to zigzag, again, as Mr. Helm said. The eight-foot umbrella height, that again wasn't a, an ADA. That was something we put in to make sure it would be dialed, dialed in and done correctly. We also put in things about, um, color of umbrellas, I believe, and lighting, and et cetera, et cetera, to really make this something the town can be proud of. So I'm hoping the board will support this. Um, I think it's a big piece of what everyone in this town does to drive Plymouth forward. And again, I think it only has to be for a few years, and then we can make this stand on its own.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Muratori?
Good evening. This is Representative Kathy Lanatra.
Good evening.
And I'm Matt Muratori. Um, thank you for, for hearing us. We really can't say it much better than what Rick did. Um, but we're not here to, to obviously tell you what to do or tell the downtown businesses what to do. We would just really, um, just give you a little bit of history of why we're here and why we're involved. The, the downtown waterfront district association started during COVID, as you're probably aware, uh, and then really kicked into gear about a year ago. And that's when we kind of got involved. Um, as you know, the Economic Foundation with Mr. Chairman and Town Manager and myself and Amy Naples are a part of, were help supporting it. Same as the Chamber, same as, uh, C Plymouth. So we came along from the state perspective to kind of help as well. Um, Representative Lanatra was, was able to get them, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars this year from a state appropriation. Um, and that's how a lot of the, uh, the lights for the Brewster Garden were actually developed. The governors, um, one of the governors' goals in this administration is really to talk about, is to do what, what Rick actually talked about, you know, trying to help downtown to make it more viable. And not that we don't have one here, but can it be better? Absolutely. And we would ask that, number one, just don't do that. Don't stop it. Try to work with, um, you know, a compromise with the downtown group and, and the select board and the town administration. We've talked to the, uh, the downtown group, cause we meet with them on a monthly basis. And, you know, there, there's some growing pains there, but they're working through that. Um, but it is such a great economic driver, as Rick said, but it's also great for tourism as well. And we think it will be a setback for tourism if that actually does end. So we hope that there could be a compromise worked out, uh, with, with everyone involved to, to continue to, to run.
Right. You know, uh, Mr. Veo and Matt said it perfectly, right? But we all know the vitality of the downtown in the summer. It is just a hub of fun, really, and it looked so beautiful. It would be a shame to lose that. Um, we were able to get a earmark, twenty-five thousand for the downtown waterfront district. And the governor is really putting a lot into our downtowns, and I think there will be more money coming forward, so that's really it. I think it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing, and I would like to see it continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have some money coming?
Well, you know, with the budget, the governor put out the budget, so then, you know how that process goes. It's, we can put some money in for earmarks, and we'll see.
For the down, no.
For the downtown, yeah.
For the outdoor dining.
For downtown waterfront district, yeah.
I misunderstood then, okay.
So, there's an initiative with the governor to look at downtowns and help downtowns. There's nothing specific.
Cause it would solve a lot of problems tonight.
Yeah, but, correct. And, and that's something that we will, we will work for, yeah, to see what, what's in the budget. We're actually doing the House Ways and Means budget. We start tomorrow, both on the committee. So we'll be looking at that over time. So we'll see what the July budget actually looks like and see what, what's really in there for the downtowns to help them out. But nothing specific for Plymouth is in there, just to be clear. Sorry.
Yes, uh, Rip Muratori. Specifically.
Like what, Matt Mahoney?
Specifically, what is this twenty, this twenty-five thousand dollars is coming into this community?
It already did, it already came. In the past. It already came to the, uh, downtown waterfront district.
Okay. I thought you were referencing a new initiative coming into the next fiscal year.
There is initiatives from the, from the governor that she, she's talked about at her speech about revitalizing downtowns and helping downtowns grow. So we just don't know specifically what that translates.
Okay.
What that translate into dollars, what that actually means.
Any other questions or comments? I want to thank both of you for taking time out of your very busy schedules to come and voice your opinions for our town. I think it's great.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come up to the microphone, just identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on, please.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Andrew Rivera Myers. I own The Artisan Pig in downtown Plymouth. I also sit on the board for the Downtown Waterfront District. We opened in 2020 during the heart of the pandemic, and we have continued to push through. Since we opened, we have, as a business, employed close to 25 employees year-round. We constantly try and, you know, put the community first whenever we get offers or asked to make donations to charitable organizations, things like that, through the nonprofit. You know, we've worked towards boosting tourism in town with the Downtown Waterfront District with Light the Night. We're looking at other initiatives like that. To the heart of the matter with outdoor dining, we have participated every single year. It has been, 2022, when I looked at it, it generated about 9% of my revenue in the summer. During the 2023 season, it was closer to 7%. I think part of that was weather-dependent. But I think, you know, from a bottom line as a business, it's almost a close to break-even for me right now at the cost that it is. And I know that that's probably similar to many of the other businesses in town. However, to Rick's point, to Matt's point, to Kathy's point, I firmly believe that outdoor dining is something that really helps drive and boost tourism to the downtown. And it might take a year or two for it to really, maybe three years, for it to really continue to kick in and be that big driving force that we want it to be. But I do think that it is important to the culture and the vibrancy of the downtown for it to be a program that continues. You know, we're not asking for handouts, things like that. We are willing to discuss and compromise and work with the board to make it something that is fair and equitable for everybody. You know, and that's including shortening the season. We've learned that there's some of the start of the season and some of the tail end of the season that's not really great, thanks to weather. So we can, you know, maybe cut some of that out. With regards to the flowers, we have reached out to the Plymouth Sheriff's Department. I think they do the flowers down on Aubrey Street to get quotes from them, to see how we can come up with something that's hopefully cost, you know, not cost-prohibitive, that we can do, that is something that's going to last, that's going to look good, and something that we can work with to try and help compromise with the board. But it's just, it is something that's very important to me that I think does drive economic tourism to Plymouth and is a small-business owner that's, you know, working really hard to continue to employ people and grow in this community and help bring more to this community. I think this is important.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Filson?
Hello, everyone. I'm Lee Filson, President and CEO of C Plymouth, and also a resident of Plymouth and also a big fan of outdoor dining personally. I also have a statement here from Stephen Cole, our economic development person here in town, as well as from Park Plymouth. Stephen asked me to pass on that Portsmouth has 23,000 residents and 30,000 restaurant seats, while Plymouth is three times the population and less than half the number of seats available with restaurants. Outdoor dining doesn't add nearly enough seats to compete with peer tourism destinations, but we will never be able to compete if our public policy is focused on taking seats away. Park Plymouth asked me to pass on that we're only talking about 19 parking places, and Park Plymouth supports outdoor dining. And they are answering the fact that some people are saying that we're losing money from the parking. But they're saying that while money is lost as a parking place, you will likely make more money in tourism taxes from those who would be seated there. So there's still money coming in either way, now from tourism and from me. It has been a huge, huge advantage on our part to add this. We get constant comments from visitors stopping in, et cetera, about how much they love the outdoor dining. We also get a lot of letters, et cetera, from people in the New England area. And we've had comments from people such as, this is greater than Newport. It's smaller, and it's more enjoyable, and not as many people. They love the vibe and the ambiance that it creates. There's more room for tables, there's for customers and increased revenue for our business community. And that, of course, really does help our merchants and our restaurateurs. It's a free ad for Plymouth, for the town of Plymouth. Every time somebody goes through and sees the beautiful parklets with the flowers, et cetera, it works out in a very positive way for us. Safer post-COVID environment with better ventilation. There's job creation there, increased footfall for neighboring shops. And tourists are drawn to areas with outdoor dining scenes. Last, I would say that outdoor dining is more than just tables and chairs placed on a pavement. It is an economic powerhouse. It plays a role in the economic force that is influencing job creation, stimulating tourism, and encouraging our development, thus making Plymouth and cities more vibrant and alive. And I hope that, I do, I do hope that we can meet in the middle. And if the restaurateurs can't quite meet a larger amount, I hope that the town will understand that it is economic development and will help us to continue what we worked so hard to build tourism-wise and still make our guests feel very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amy Naples, Executive Director for the Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce and?
Scott Huckinson, Chair of the Chamber of Commerce Board.
So of course, we're going to echo the statements from my colleagues regarding outdoor dining. And as probably the biggest mall business cheerleaders in this town, we hope that you will support continuing outdoor dining and working with the businesses, really to come up with something in between. I will tell you and remind you that we have three new waterfront businesses downtown, on the waterfront. And these downtown businesses, they feel it in the, you know, in the summer months. And they're going to be competing with three additional businesses. And I think it's just so important to remember that they are struggling to stay open, you know, seasonally. It is so important for them to utilize that space. And what we've created has been amazing. I think the flowers, everything looks beautiful. It creates a really cool vibe. I hear it all the time. I will also say that we've received a ton of phone calls this past week since the DWD had put it out on Facebook and Instagram, letting people know. And we've gotten calls from all over, you know, neighboring towns, saying, I really hope that you're going to be supporting the businesses and continuing the outdoor dining. Scott, anything else?
No, I just want to say thank you, guys, for the efforts. And I want to echo Rick's point on making sure that whatever we do with the flowers, they stay consistent. I think the consistency of the look is paramount to the whole vibe. And three years ago, almost to the day, I moved within, you know, walking distance of downtown. And the person that uses downtown the most is my 14-year-old son, who bikes down there every day in the summer with his friends. Now, he's not going to Malbar, you know, for dinner. But the fact that it's a vibrant place full of a lot of activity is part of what brings him down there as well. So I really appreciate it, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We take one more.
Hi, my name is Nina Peters. I'm the owner of two downtown businesses that have been utilizing outdoor spaces since its inception. We've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. I worked with Rick on creating some of those guidelines that we've been using for the past year or two that seemingly have created a seamless look for downtown. Personally, I have a bit of a green thumb, so I'm willing to pitch in and do my own flowers if need be, although I do understand the need for some conformity. And that's it. I'm a big fan of having the option. Sometimes it works in our favor, sometimes it doesn't. It isn't a huge generator of revenue for our businesses, but it sure is nice having the option.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board for discussion. Mr. Helm, Mr. Blitzer, and Mr. Canty?
So thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for bringing your thoughts and observations. And I just want to take us back in time to a couple of years ago, around about this time, when the whole idea of outdoor dining was transitioning from a state mandate to possibly no longer a state mandate. And we were discussing it at the board. And I pointed out that what we had in place was not acceptable for Plymouth, not acceptable for our community. And we formed the Outdoor Dining Committee with a number of people here who were on it, okay? And we created the concept that you see in place now, which has, you know, everything that Rick pointed out. We were even the subject of a Boston Herald article, which compared the way that we went about it and the success we had in putting it in program with the fractious nastiness in the north end of Boston. So we did it right. We created something really wonderful. And from my standpoint, I don't see ending that, okay? Because I do think, in my mind, it is something that promotes Plymouth forward in many ways that, you know, as Rick pointed out, there are a lot of wheels, a lot of cogs in moving Plymouth forward to where we would like it to be. And outdoor dining is part of that. The, we've come to a crossroads again, just like we were two years, a couple of years ago, when all we had were water-filled, white jersey barriers, no floors. It was a mad scramble. Tables were all over the place. I can remember walking through San Diego's, and I felt like I was walking through people's burritos because you had to dodge through the tables. So there was a lot of learning that was put in place, and it created what we have now. What, so we're at a crossroads again. I'd like to remind the committee, we never disbanded the Outdoor Dining Committee. I would suggest that we do not need to make a decision tonight, but we could make a decision to reactivate, it's already active, but reactivate that Outdoor Dining Committee to be where, you know, Lee mentioned compromise, Andrew mentioned compromise. We, I'm not sure we'll be able to compromise correctly in this current setting. Too many moving parts, not just the flowers. Who's going to pay for them? Can somebody subsidize them? Will somebody stand up? Will we go to Lee and ask her group to help subsidize the flowers? Number four, do we allow those tables? You know, there are, just like in the whole concept of moving Plymouth forward, there are little cogs and wheels in the outdoor dining program. We're at a, in my mind, we're once again at a crossroads. And where we go in the future, you know, without throwing out the baby with the bathwater. So I'm going to suggest that we reinvigorate the outdoor dining with the charge to come back to this group with a proposal of compromise and everything to see what, to give the board things to actually vote on that, you know, we could vote no, but at least proposals out of the nebulous idea of, hey, we can compromise. Let's get those on paper. Let's get them solid. Let the Outdoor Dining Committee do its work and then come back and present, you know, a concept.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a lot to say on this, I really do. And I don't want to be all over the place, but I want to start with, this isn't the town against the businesses. This is not what this is tonight or ever. We need to work together to come up with some kind of a plan to help the outdoor dining. I have a question. How many business owners, how many restaurant owners from downtown are in the audience tonight? Raise your hands. Three, there's three. And I don't mean to get negative, but I've been to some of the meetings, and there's only four or five people show up. And for us, for the, we want to revitalize the downtown. We want to be helpful, but we have to work together. The merchants are the most important piece to this, okay? You have to, you have to be open, number one. You've got to be committed to the downtown. And you've got to, whatever the guidelines are, you have to adhere to the guidelines. If you're allowed to have 29 seats, 29 seats. Not have seats across the sidewalk, which I saw multiple times last year in certain parts of the downtown, and that can't happen. But we're working together. A couple of things, I just, you know, you're talking about, and by the way, when the state delegation came in tonight, I thought they were going to help us and come up with the money we needed. Because it's not a lot of money that if they can come up with some money for us, we could probably solve this problem. But I guess I jumped the gun a little bit. But to compare Portsmouth to Plymouth, we can't do it. We have 106 square miles of residence. No, I didn't, 106 square miles, so there's a difference. They have 23,000 residents, we have 65,000. And they have more seats in their downtown than we do. But it's, you can't compare that. In the waterfront, if you talk to the businesses in the waterfront, and there's certain businesses that tell you that they're dead. It's a ghost town down there for most of the waterfront. That's how it is. So the downtown, downtown Plymouth is, should be an economic generator for Plymouth. And I know when we hired our new town manager at the time, he spoke about revitalizing the downtown. That's one of the things he wants to do. In the board, we want to do the same thing. We want to do anything we can to help you. Unfortunately, this year, we, budget has gone up, taxes have gone up, and we're, things are very tight for the town. So, you know, my question is, is we have to come up with the lowest costs for this program and to see if you can work with the costs. And I was going to ask Brad Brothers, who's up there, can you, with these options here, can you tell us what the bare minimum of costs to do this outdoor dining? In other words, can we take the labor, the DPW labor? Can we take that out of the cost to the merchants? Can you tell me what that number would be if we did that?
Yeah, so if you were to take that piece out of a renewal, the police detail and the materials are about $1,000 of the 2,700 number. So if you were going to say, let's the town absorb the cost of the DPW labor, that would bring the cost down to $1,000 per parklet. But again, that cost would be absorbed. It's in the budget. So it's not like that's not a true cost, it just is, that wouldn't be passed on to the businesses.
So that's a number. And then the flowers, obviously, we want to be consistent. Because that's, my whole thing is, the downtown, we want it to be consistent. We want it to be tasteful, appealing to people coming into our town. So I think to, if we could find, and again, we don't want to be flower people for, I mean, I know, Brad, you don't want to be the middleman for that, but if we could.
No, if I misstated that, I apologize. That was not my intention, that it's going to be a free-for-all down there. But what I really meant to say is that we're just the medium on this, that if you cut us out of it, the businesses could still go to one vendor, so it's consistent. It just is, I don't know why the town's chasing flowers, to be honest with you.
Okay, no, I get it. So you hear where I'm coming from. I want to get the cost to the minimum and then throw it out to the businesses. Like I said, Harry, we're probably not going to vote in this tonight, but put it out to the businesses. Do you want outdoor dining? I just heard two people say it doesn't make money for them. And so I'm hearing mixed messages. I'm hearing mixed messages. If it's not going to make you money, why would you do it? It doesn't make sense. And then we have, Rick Vail has a great point, and I agree with you. We need you guys to revitalize our downtown. I want to see, seven days a week, restaurants open, shops open. I'd like to see at night, when people get done dining, they can walk to downtown Plymouth, and the shops will be open, just like you see in Provincetown, just like you see in Newport, just like you see in Portsmouth, Portland, all these towns that we want to be. But we're not going to be that until we work together. And Lee Filson will tell you, I've been telling her since I've known her, that we have to do this. So, you know, it's, so I'm all for helping the businesses, but the businesses got to help too. We got to work together in this. So, let's come up with the plan that we can afford, everybody can afford, and let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Brad, could you reiterate what, if the labor of town employees were taken out for a renewal, what the figure per, and not including the cost of flowers, what the cost would be to a business?
Yep, give me one last second here. Okay, so, if you were to, if you were to take out the cost of facilities and highway, their labor costs, the grant, it would take out about $1,700 from the $2,700 cost. So, it would leave you $1,000. Essentially, $1,000 represents the overtime police detail and $300 for replacement materials.
Okay. And how many total parklets did we have last year?
I believe nine, which took up 18 parking spots.
And do we have an estimate as to how many, if, because obviously, there could be new parklets are also considered. Do we have an idea of how many, if everybody wanted a parklet, how many parklets there are theoretical that we could be putting out?
Don't. I know Lisa Johnson may have looked at that before, but I don't have that number on me.
Do you know, the nine last year, is that lower than the year before, or higher?
I think we lost one and we gained one last year.
So, relatively steady?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and we have one business too, that it sidewalk only. They didn't even, they did not do a parklet again.
So, I wasn't, thank you, Brad. So, I wasn't on the board last year, but I was in attendance at the meeting, and I know the conversation that we had at the meeting last year was, the town was going to subsidize businesses, this effort for businesses essentially, for an additional year, and, but wouldn't, would likely not be able to do that this year. And now I am on the board, not in the audience, which, good for me. But, you know, I think that there's, yeah, there's always a but, Mr. Chairman. So, my but would be, I think, I don't necessarily have a problem with the town contributing the labor, minus the police detail component of it. I do not personally believe that the town should be footing any more of the bill than that. I also, I agree with the Assistant Town Manager that the town shouldn't really be in the flower business. There's, I guess, some differing opinions in the usefulness of flowers. I mean, at the end of the day, talking about outdoor dining, so to me, you need a table, you need some chairs, and you need some structural protection. Flowers are sort of an extra. So, I don't think we're going to be taking a vote on this tonight, but my opinion on this, as it stands, is if we were to charge for a renewal, the $1,000, and come up with a plan for, if we really want these flowers to be consistent, that all the people that get it will pool their resources together to acquire the uniform flowers, then great. If we're willing to live with a few less flowers downtown, and instead not have that be there, and just have the fundamentals there, see how that works out. But right now, the town, the town is in a delicate position, in a wider sense. For example, the town has a number of enterprise funds, one of which is the airport. We have been critical of the airport in the not-too-distant past for being essentially subsidized, because they're an enterprise fund, they're essentially a town-owned business that is supposed to be self-sustaining. And we've been telling them, you need to become self-sustaining again. And if that's a business that we own, and we're telling them we don't want to subsidize them, it's a hard sell to subsidize businesses that we don't own, right? So, I think we got to be consistent on that front. We've also got the fact that the budget is very, very intense this year. We have to increase taxes to meet the needs of this community, not its wants. For years, we've been, we've had a low tax rate that has not been doing what this community needs done, which is costing us more money over time, and penny-wise and pound-foolish. But that, those increases are going to be felt by people, and we need to be able to credibly make the case that those increases are for needs, not wants. And while I do support economic development, I do support the downtown businesses, whether they're on Court Street or Main Street, or whether they're down on Water Street or anywhere else, I just think that we're in a position where the town can't subsidize more than what I outlined, based on its budgetary constraints. We've got other considerations that are needs, and this is a want. If we had all the money in the world, that would be a great problem to have, and then I'd have no problem with this. But that, unfortunately, is not where we are, and context must always be considered when making decisions like this, because there's always more that we would like to do than we can do. That is the reality of municipal government, and I think that's where we are. So, that's my but, Mr. Chairman. And I would say that that's my opinion on this at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
So, I believe it's government's job to set the bar as high as possible with respect to what we want to see out in the community. And I know a certain segment of our population might cringe by this example I'm going to give you, but we were told years ago, but the single greatest thing we could do for the waterfront in the downtown area, and, I'm sorry, the waterfront in the harbor, was to dredge the harbor. I left the meeting, never thought that that would happen, and remarkably, the funding came down to the $214 million from the federal government, and it has subsequently happened, and other things are occurring down on the waterfront. Having said that, I think that we need to set the goal to become the fourth P, Portland, Maine, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and Providence, Rhode Island. And I think we have the, the raw talent is here, and we're just going to take it to the next level and be consistent. I am just going to repeat what some of my colleagues have said, and what numerous people who get up to the podium said. I'm a proponent of getting this done. We need to be consistent, but we need to be safe. We want to maximize what we're doing. We don't want to block sidewalks. You know, and obviously, I'm a proponent of the flowers, but they have got to be consistent from, you know, the beginning to the end. It comes down to, what level of subsidization are we going to engage in? And does that come through? Mr. Canty is right. I think last year, the board took a stance with respect to saying, in the season of 2023, that would be the last dip into the Opera well money for flowers. And I do agree with Mr. Canty that if something were to happen, I see the path forward there with respect to the facilities and highway numbers that Mr. Brothers has up on the screen. And I also agree with Mr. Helm. I don't know what the drop dead date is for making a decision, but I do believe we probably have a few weeks here, and I think Mr. Helm is on to something to, you know, reconstituting that committee and getting a few people in the room and see if we can come out with a consensus.
Okay, I heard a lot of what everybody said. I agree with almost all of you in some of your statements, but the first year it came out, if you remember, just quickly, the governor said that he was doing it, and why he was doing it, and then it was extended. And at that point, I told everybody in the audience that it was to be extended until the governor. It was because of COVID. And I had a feeling that this was going to happen, and it has. So, I do possibly support it, but I have to see the flowers, you know, that we can't be in the flower business of town. Assistant Town Manager, I don't know what way you meant to come across, but I'll be Dicky Downer. You know, I have no interest in doing that. However, I have very much interest in them to look in good, because if it doesn't look good, then I definitely won't support it. As far as the highway goes, I checked with Mr. Corleous Mon, we were at a previous meeting. I don't have an issue with that, but like the vice chairman, the police detail is a lot of money. We have a budget this year that's very tight, and when I say very tight, I mean very tight, to the tone where some of the town managers' goals were eliminated. So, it's not just, we like to hear ourselves talk, but we have a big concern with that. My other big concern was insurance. If somebody was to get hurt in one of those parklets by a car, for whatever reason, or a vehicle, and I was assured today that each business will put up a good business certificate of insurance, making the town whatever that is. So, that part of it's covered, is my concern. That was my second biggest concern. So, it saddens me that, you know, let's take it for what it is. I hope I'm here next year, but I hope by the time we put this on the docket, we already have our committee meetings, and we have all the suggestions, so we don't keep dragging it. I mean, it's very frustrating sitting at this table for me, and maybe it's because I'm spoiled, if you will, I just get things done. At work, I get things done, and I like to see things done. I mean, this isn't rocket science. That's the cause. You already know everything you did last year, so I don't know why we have to extend it, but out of courtesy to the board, so be it. So, am I correct in assuming that we're going to table this for a little bit? Derek, do you need any direction on this at all, as far as the town goes?
Well, yeah, I think that if the board wants to table it, you know, we would want that. We probably would like to know our left and right limits. I mean, one thing we haven't talked about is, the parklets are already designed, they've already been scribed, and like every other private institution, I would suggest one consideration is that they hire their own contractors to come in and set up and break them down. And so, the only costs associated at this time would just be to hire a detail officer to close the road down. Again, you know, we are wandering into the private sector by setting up, breaking down, being the middleman on flowers, and I get it, it was important during COVID, you know, but at some point, you know, the town has to focus on its core municipal services. Every time we take away the facilities team, the highway team, we're taking away another project from them that is, that should be in their top priority. So, happy to follow the direction of the board and do what you expect us to.
Before I do that, I just want to, I know Mr. Vail wants to say something, and since I told him to sit down before, I feel bad now.
I feel like, I feel like that's the only thing to do.
Feel me?
I'll try to keep this brief. So, with all due respect to the board and Mr. Helm in terms of delaying this, I don't want to see it delayed, because I don't want to get into a situation like we were in before, where we're scrambling to get this done. Businesses are scrambling with the ABC, and Lisa's scrambling in the town manager's office to get this done, because I know what she has to go through to make this happen. So, in light of that, and in light of some of the things that Mr. Canty had mentioned, if the town was willing to waive the fees, as Mr. Brothers detailed, the labor fees, then I think the fee would only be $1,000 approximately. I don't think we did the calculation on the new one, on the new side, but we certainly could. And that would mean that if the business owners paid that $1,000, they could use the rest of their money, $1,500 maybe coupled with some other funds coming in to cover the flowers. That's what I'd be proposing we would do, and just move forward with that. I think it's a reasonable compromise. I think it gets this done. I know it's slightly disagreeing with the town manager, which I very rarely do, but I want to see this get done, and I think it's something that, it's here, the people are here. And I, just to clarify, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, when a business owner says that this specific wasn't profitable, they may look at the tables versus what it costs and what that generated, and then the amount of rain that came in, but when they look at it in terms of what business it brought to them throughout the year, that 10 people, 20 people, 50 people that came and sat outside and happened to love the tasty, and now are going there all year long. So, it's very, very, I believe few, if any, instances where it's actually not highly profitable in the long-term marketing of a business and of Plymouth. But I think that compromise can work. I spoke briefly with Andrew about that. I think the business owners would go for that. It would be $1,000 to the town. They would buy their own flowers. We would come up with a strategic way of doing that through one source, that they would purchase them, come in and install them, so that we don't have random business owners planting all down Main Street and Court Street. But I think that can work. I'd love to see this get voted on, and I think that's a compromise that hopefully everyone could live with.
Mr. Blitzer?
So, it's good to see that great minds think alike, because that's exactly what I proposed when I was talking, is the cost, $1,000, and then the merchants pay for the flowers. So, that's exactly, I'd be agreeable to that. I'm not sure how my board feels, but that's, that would be agreeable to me.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other discussion, I'd be prepared to make a motion. It's up to you.
I would. I'd just like to ask Derek his thoughts, if that's okay before they make a motion. Mr. Brandezi?
Again, you know, I think, you know, my position has always been, for the last two years, that, you know, we have to get back to business and focus on core municipal service, public safety, public health, public works. And the more we continue to offer these services to the private sector, the more we take away from those core services. I can, we've talked dozens of times about the graffiti in our community. So, every time you ask us to focus on the local businesses, we're not focusing on graffiti. We're not focusing on keeping our streets clean. Mr. Blitzer talks about keeping the sidewalks clean, and so, we're doing that on behalf of the businesses. So, you know, my position is that we provide the setups and have the businesses set them up on their own, and have, hire their own contractor.
Yep.
Yes, but also, I agree, Derek, and, but I want to see, what I'm going to be looking for this year, is if we vote on this, is to see everybody participate, to see all the businesses participating downtown and coming in and telling us how much money they made, how successful everything was. I mean, last year, there was a ton of rain. It rained every Saturday night in the summer. I mean, that killed, it killed everybody. But I want to see some enthusiasm from the businesses, and just, we got to work together. We got to, we have a beautiful downtown, and we got to get people to come there, make them feel welcome. And so, that's what I want to see. So, we, if this gets approved, like I said, my, one of my favorite sayings is, working together for Plymouth, and that's what we have to do. Thank you.
Just on a final note, just to what Mr. Brandezi said, if we can make this happen one more year, maybe it's two more years, I will personally say that I will do everything humanly possible to get this off the town's plate, because I agree with everything you're saying, but then I also agree with everything I'm saying about how important it is.
Mr. Mahoney?
So, Mr. Vail, that's where I was going to go. So, what's the end game? When we talk about the considerations of the town manager and, you know, potentially cannibalizing, you know, stealing from Peter to pay Paul, and ignoring one thing when we're focusing on something else. So, this year, if the proposal is to subsidize through manpower, and we all know that there was a conversation last year saying that it would be the last time that we subsidize flowers with Opera money, where's the stepping off point where it's fully sustainable? How do we get there?
Yeah, I think we get there through a few ways. I think we get there through a strong, whether it's the downtown waterfront district, or whether it's the Economic Development Foundation, you know, helping in terms of economic development to drive businesses to a point where they can afford the actual costs associated with this. That's where we want to be. I, the costs are the cost to put this together, and if we can do it with private contractors, get the cost down some, and then the businesses can afford to do that, I'm all for that. I'll work diligently with the downtown waterfront district, with any other group to help I'll work diligently with the Downtown Waterfront District, with any other group to help put this together. We can look for outside funding to make this happen. We could also look for some sponsorship from local businesses, but I will work to make this happen. But at the moment, they still need the crutch, is what it boils down to, and I just think it's a very important crutch right now. And next year is next year. It, maybe, we are sustainable. I think we can be next year, and if we're not, then it's up to the board to say, you know what, we've given you every shot we can.
Because if you look a year down the road, you're going to see a lot of people referencing conversations that occurred in '23 and '24, and now we're at, so.
I'm sure you guys will all remind me of my statements from '24.
Mr. Canty.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would make a motion that we, in terms, reset a policy for outdoor dining for calendar year 2024 that waives the labor related to highway and facilities for renewals and the labor, but not supplies and materials for any new parklets. So obviously, that involves the construction or acquisition of that. We wouldn't waive that, but we would waive the labor. And we would require uniform flowers at the businesses' expense, as was stated by Mr. Vail as an, as a preferred option, which we don't want to be in the flower business. And we would permit sidewalk tables consistent with regulations to be enforced by inspectional That would be my motion at this time.
I'll second that. Mr. Canty, then Mr. Mahoney.
So I, I am, as I said earlier, aware of what was said last year. We said no more flowers, or the board said no more flowers, and now we're not, a proposed motion does not include that. I also agree with the Town Manager that we need to focus on core municipal services, but I hear from businesses that it's something that they want, so I'm willing to meet them halfway on this. I would say next year, next year, maybe we could deliver the stuff to them at the same type of rate, and then they'll be responsible for them at that point. They'd have to take them down, they'd have to put them back up in the future years, so then we'd be regulating their use of the parklets. We might acquire for that, you know, so that we're getting uniform parklets, new ones that we'd give to them as part of a new one, but that might be a way to offboard this so that we're getting back to core municipal services in the future, because I think this is the type of thing that it's going to be, there's always going to be a desire to have it be somewhat subsidized, and I understand that. I think it does provide a benefit to the entire community, including the town, but at the end of the day, these are benefiting businesses, or they're not benefiting businesses, in which case you don't need to have one, I'm sure. But I think that's a reasonable offboarding step, is this year, we're taking away the, we're passing the flowers on. Next year, we give them to you, and then they're yours, and we would only be regulating their use. So that would be my, my thought process. I mean, but obviously, we can revisit that next year. People disagree with that component. My motion is just about what we want to do this year. That's my thoughts. I think we're, we're meeting people in a reasonable halfway point, and I would request that my colleagues vote in favor of this, so we can give businesses time to prepare for the season with some certainty.
Mr. Mahoney.
Just for clarity, the, so the motion includes on the left side for the renewal, a reduction of $1,740, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. What's the reduction on the right side for the new? Does, I don't know if Mr. Brothers has that?
Yeah, give me one second.
I think it would be approximately the same.
It's, it's about, let's see here, $1,400. It would be right around $2,000. It's right around $2,800, because you can't forget that it's the material cost for the first year, and the custom construction is about another $900. So that's about $2,100 plus $800 for the detail, so you're actually right around $2,900.
The reduction, or what we're still charging them, therefore, the reduction would become about $2,000?
No, we would need, we would still request them, if all things are consistent, the material cost is about $1,200 for a new parklet. The custom construction for the initial parklet, first year, is about $900, so you're at $2,100 right there. And then if you add the police detail in, that is roughly right around $800. So you're right in the $2,900 ballpark for year one of a new park.
So the reduction for the new one under this proposal would be, would be $2,000, give or take. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the, so the license fee, the license fee for a renewal, it would be $1,000. The license fee for a new parklet would be $2,900. That's what Brad's proposing.
Mr. Blitzer.
Just real quick, this is probably for next year. To just give it to them and let them put them up and take them down, it's, it won't be consistent. If you want to be consistent, and then they have to store them, they all have to go up at the same time, the same day or two, to be consistent, and so that, that probably won't work for next year. Just keep that in mind, but that's probably a conversation, Kevin, for next year. I just want to keep that in mind.
I look forward to having that with you, Charlie.
Any more discussion? All right, so was motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Helm? I got it. We're finished with discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And I abstain. Four in favor, one abstention. Mr. Brandisi.
So now that you've finished that vote, I just want clarity on two different issues. One, I think the board should talk about the season. We received numerous complaints in the month of October, so remember, the season ended on November 1st, and as a person who lives downtown, I walked in, and clearly, I think November was too long. So I would propose that, and I think most of the restaurants would agree, that maybe October 1st should be the deadline. And so that's one thing I think I'd like the board to consider for tonight. And then, just for clarity's sake, sidewalk dining, did you vote?
Yes.
Part of that motion, $100 per seat, sidewalk dining? Okay, I just want to be clear on that when we issue licenses.
Mr. Canty.
Yes, so the, the original motion included the $100 per seat and inspectional services regulation.
Okay.
Did you have any issues with the beginning of the season?
I haven't, I didn't hear complaints with the beginning, although I did talk to some restaurant owners who thought that May was a little too early, but again, you know, I would defer to the restaurant owners on that one.
I just wanted to let you know from all of the stuff that we research about that, it could start, it could start Memorial Day, we, and then go through September, because we have a lot of visitors in September, but that would, we've got data to show you that that would be a good decision, so.
Yeah, I think as far as shortening the season goes, both on the, the front end and the tail end, as we noticed, April, I think, is when we started last year. April was very slow. It's still cold, it's still hard. Middle of May through Columbus Day weekend or so is probably good. I don't think we need to push it past that, and I don't think we need to really start much earlier than middle of May. And to, I didn't mention this earlier, I know Kathleen and Matt mentioned the $25,000 that did come to the Downtown Waterfront District. We're happy to look at that money to help offset that cost of the flowers as well, to help with the businesses. And lastly, I'm happy to work with Rick, work with the committee for the downtown, for the outdoor dining committee on how do we offload this from the town next year, so that way, when it comes January, February next year, we're not scrambling to do this, we already have a plan in place moving forward for us. So I'm happy to, to contribute my time to, to that.
I'll give you two words, state delegation.
Mr. Canty.
I'd make a motion that we approve the outdoor dining season to run from May 13th, which is a Monday, until October 4th, which is a Friday.
That, that major holiday weekend in October is 10 days after that. Do they, do they want that included?
Columbus Day is October 14th.
That's well in, yeah, they want that. So then, all right, October 15th.
Okay.
Which is the Tuesday.
Now, could you just repeat that again?
So it would be May 13th to start, and it would be October 15th to conclude.
I'll second that. Second. Mr. Blitzer, get his light on.
I vote yes. No discussion, I'm ready to vote.
Harry?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. In unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go shoot a hole in the ground. Anyone want to speak on the public comment? Anybody online, Ginny, wanting to speak that you know of? No? Town Manager's report.
Okay, Ginny, can you cue up the video? Okay, so I'll tell you when to hit play, as long as it's queued up. So there's a couple of things I want to report tonight, and I'll end with a video. First and foremost, you may have noticed that there was a Boston Globe article yesterday, and there's going to be a follow-up article that talks about the lack of distribution of the opioid remediation funds. There's a critical article across the state, and there's only a couple municipalities that actually have distributed those dollars. I met with the Boston Globe yesterday, had a conversation, and explained to them that in large part, it was because of how the money was distributed to cities and towns. So we had to go to town meeting, as you remember, in October, and get the money transferred from free cash over to the grant account in order for us to distribute those dollars. And as reported last week, our Health and Human Services Department now currently has an RFP that's out. We're seeking applications. Well, that's a 30-day application period, and we will review those applications and distribute those dollars thereafter. So I just wanted the board to be aware of some of the articles coming out of Boston as it relates to those funds, but I wanted, more importantly, the folks to know that we are actively trying to disseminate those dollars as quickly as possible. Just a couple other quick updates. I reported a couple weeks ago that we haven't had a lot of progress on the, the streetlights and the intersection at Halfway Pond and Long Pond Road. Primarily, it was because we weren't getting active participation from the abutters. So we were in the process of preparing a warrant article for October so that we could do temporary land takings in order to complete that project. But I was informed today by the DPW Director that once that information became public, that we want to take the land through town meeting in October, we are actively now sitting down negotiating a way so that we can make that happen. So we will keep the board posted on that one. I know a lot of folks in the community keep asking about the intersection, so we'll try to keep everybody apprised. You may have learned through the local newspapers, and I just want to credit the police chief and his command staff and patrolmen who were able to identify the, one of the suspects who participated in stealing money from a Walmart employee over the summer. There were three suspects who robbed this individual, and one of those individual, those suspects have been found in Tennessee. We sent two of our officers to Tennessee to bring him back to Massachusetts. He will be arraigned this week in district court. So again, great work for them, for the detectives to find that individual in Tennessee. Just a couple other items. The special referendum that was held regarding the NIPSPAN cost the town $50,000. So our town clerk reported that today, that the numbers are in, and those special elections has cost the town approximately $50,000. A couple other items, we, I'm going to, I'm going to talk, when we go to the video, about this grant we received. We were notified today that we received a state award, a Massachusetts firefighter safety grant for $35,000. This is to purchase ballistic vests and helmets for our fire department and EMS department, and I'm going to show you a video in a few minutes as to why that's on board. Just one more minute. And then I just wanted to bring to your attention that we also received a cybersecurity grant, again, for the second consecutive year. You can tee that up. So this is a training, you'll see this video, Captain Higgins from PD put this video together. There was a training last week, the chief and his team brought up a, folks from LSU, Louisiana State University, to train us on active shooter training. And so this is a video. This is one of the first times that they've had a complete, completely integrated response training, which included fire, police, and EMS. And what was great about this training is that we had 25 police officers who volunteered to participate in this training, and 20 firefighters who volunteered, and six EMS. And so you'll see in this video that this is a scenario where there's an active shooter inside the building. Obviously, they send in the, the initial response team that go to try to identify the shooter, take down the shooter, and then quickly, once they've secured the area, you will notice that they start to look for victims who've been injured because of the active So this training took place at the, at the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department. It's the first of its kind. The chief plans on bringing back this type of training in the future. The goal is to try to get all of our offices and firefighters trained initially, and then move more into a full-scale exercise that we would host at one of our larger buildings. And again, this is primarily, as you all know, because of the dozens and dozens of active shootings that take place primarily, you see, in our schools. And so what you, what you probably won't see in this video, I don't know if you'll find it, but they actually have mannequins that act as real people, and it squirts blood, you have to apply a certain amount of pressure on these mannequins. These mannequins are about $85,000. And so these trainers from LSU brought up these mannequins from their institution so that we can have real, live training and provide as realistic care as possible in this type of situation. So I had the opportunity to attend this for just a short period of time, for an hour, and to get a sense of how our first responders are training for real-world events. So, so again, this is just the, this is when they bring in the EMS and the fire, fire team to extract folks from the building. So there's only about a minute left in this video, but pending any questions, that's And that's the chief in the command center. I think that's it, Ginny.
Is it, Derek? Any questions or comments for Derek? Yeah, I saw that online. I thought it was pretty cool that they were doing that.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty unique training. The, the town has never participated in that type of integrated response with all three components.
Right, with more than one department, yeah. Anything on the new business? Mr. Canty?
I have two items. One, it was, I was contacted by a resident with some concerns related to litter at a specific location. specific location. I know that the topic of litter has been bandied about for some time, and we have see, click, fix. There are, there's a nuisance category with some subcategories under there, including graffiti, but not litter. So I was hoping we could add litter to see, click, fix under nuisance for future use. Obviously, there, you have to take a picture of it, you put your geolocation, so hopefully, if it's just like a, you know, soda bottle on the ground, somebody will just pick it up rather than posting that online. But if it's more substantial, like some of these dumping sites and things of that nature, it's maybe unreasonable to expect residents to pick that up. So that might be beneficial. The other thing, I was at Precinct Threes Caucus last week. They were having one, their regular monthly caucus, they're one of the precincts that does that. They were at eleven Lincoln Street, it was a good meeting. One of the topics that was brought up was, and this is something that, when we moved into this town hall, I'd heard a lot about, that there was a historic clock that was intended to be put in this room. As you may notice, there is no clock in this room whatsoever. I heard a lot about that clock at the beginning, and then I stopped hearing about it, and then I thought it may never have existed, but apparently it does. Apparently, it is on the back floor of the eighteen-twenty courtroom. It is a historic clock that has been restored. The chair of the CPC has some historic clock expert in Abington that he'd like to have the opportunity to work with the town's electrical contractor to hang up in this room, so there would be a clock in this room. So my hope was that we could get some consensus from the board that we are okay with having a clock, having that particular clock in this room and the work that is entailed to, because they just need electrical hookup to the wall for it to function. So that's it, that's all I got.
Okay. Motion, John?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to, a week ago Saturday, I was able to get up to the hilltop in Kingston. Paul McGoliffe, the former director of inspectional services, has passed away recently. You know, he did that job for twelve years, lived up in Rocky Nook for forty-five, and you know, over the, over the years, I got to know Paul, and he had some great stories. You know, some of them can be told publicly and some of them can't, but it was a great turnout. There was probably a dozen or so former and current town employees that showed up, and it was, you know, it was a celebration of Paul's life because he lived, he, he left no stone unturned, if you will.
Thank you. Absolutely correct, John. Any letters? Derek, we got a letter from Ms. Sheila today in her emails. Over the generator? And, yes, thank you. And she wants to meet with the select board. So I had spoken to her several times and offered her, you know, public comment to come in, but I guess she don't get around good at night, so I just want to let you know that, you know, I'm responding to the email that we got, I think it was today.
Yeah, we're happy to continue those conversations, but you know, the fire chief, inspection service, and myself have met with her on multiple occasions to try to give her the answers she's looking for and a pathway to an appeal if she doesn't agree with a local decision.
Right.
And she has all that information, so I'm not sure what else we can do for her at this time.
Okay, thank you. Motion, John?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Thank you for watching, have a wonderful week. We'll see you next week.